And now we're going to call the order that our regular town council meeting. So if everybody please stand, please leave us.
Let's leave this to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we jump into the invocation, I'd like to take a moment to file this for Deputy Phil Henshaw. If we could please take a moment. Thank you. Todd, could you please lead us in the invocation?
Absolutely, just bow your hands. Our Heavenly Father, another day has come and we're about to end. Lord, we want to thank you first of all for being there with us throughout this day. We want to thank you for being there from the beginning. Lord, we ask that you'll be with this council tonight as they make their decisions. Lord, we ask that you'll give them guidance and the courage that it takes to move forward. We ask that you'll watch over this meeting and bless everybody here. We ask all of it in your name and pray, amen.
Thank you, Senator. So next on the agenda, the special presentation request, there's nothing scheduled, no new business recognition. So next will be the approval of minutes from the council meeting on October 13th, 2020. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor of approval of minutes, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. So council meeting minutes by October 13th, 2020 are approved. So next, the approval of financial statements and the financial report of October 2020. Can I get a motion for approval?
I'm moved.
I can get a second.
Second.
All in favor, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. So the financial statements of October 2020 are approved. The next section is committee conference updates. We'll get a planning commission committee update from Councilmember Davis.
Okay, we had the planning commission met last Monday and we discussed a request for closing of, or partial closing of Kingston Street, and that's going to be brought up later. We're moving it to council to request a joint public hearing. So we'll hear about it a little bit later from Chris.
Any questions? Okay, next, we're going to get an update from Chief Hodges on the casual fire department truck purchase.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. In your council packets, you'll find financial information on replacing the ladder truck and the pump truck that is out of service due to pump issues with that truck. When I was appointed as inter-chief back in September of last year, it was the first obligation myself and my officers to make sure that we had adequate equipment. As most of you know, the ladder truck is 44 years old, which is older than three quarters of my membership that I have down there now. Myself included. That being said, we did undertake the project last year, paid a substantial amount of money to get some much-needed repairs to the ladder truck. The hydraulic system was totally gone in the truck. The waterway system was totally gone in the truck. Working with the town manager, we sent the truck to run it up to Atlantic Emergency Solutions and we were able to get the truck certified for at least another year. The truck is being recertified in January of 2021. These trucks have to have annual inspections in order for us to use them. The bad thing about this truck is right now, as it is, is not NFPA compliant due to the age of the truck. And by that, the mainsaver bars that we have, not having any closed cab, buried its maintenance issues and repair issues with this truck. So we put together a proposal with the assistance of Bobby St. Clair from Atlantic Emergency Solutions. He's a Pierce representative. We put together, in your packets, you have financial information for financing both the pumper and the ladder truck, and just the ladder truck. The ladder truck alone is 1.4 million, that's $1,458,531. The price of both trucks, the ladder truck and the pumper truck, would be $2,138,343. They have several financing options. You can pick up your payment a year after the truck is delivered or after the contract is signed, or it could be a two-year payment default. However you guys will want to proceed with that would be up to you all. Also in your packet, we have letters of support from the town of Bluefield and the town of Richland in support of this project due to mutual aid purposes with those. The setup time on the new truck versus an old truck, the mayor was able to see firsthand the difference in the truck. I actually had the demo truck set up in under 30 seconds and our current ladder truck hadn't even got off the branch yet. The hydraulic system didn't even kick in. Those seconds and minutes can matter if we had a fire and we had to reach the second or third story window to pull a victim out of the fire. Again, with the purchase of the new trucks, you would be getting maintenance and five-year warranty on the new trucks. Anything repair-wise that would have to be done, even one of the trucks would be covered under that five-year maintenance or that five-year warranty, except for your oil change, air filter changes, stuff like that, which I feel for sure Donnie's can get taken care of that, no problem. Again, you know, we've got letters of support from Bluefield and Richland supporting us on this project. And again, it's our goal to help you guys to try to protect your infrastructure that you've got, your homes, your businesses, and the things that you all invested in as a tank. Overall, the fire department is, we're moving along, they're in great shape. We're adding new members, we're actually sending them through fire schools, we're getting them trained. We're just at a point now where we need to start doing some major upgrades to some equipment. And we're hoping to reach out to you guys and hopefully you all can help us out with that. The pumper truck, I touched a little bit on it. When we had a pumper set off for its annual inspection, it failed its annual inspection. It's a 1990 American and France truck. The pump that was built for that truck was built proprietary for that truck. That was one of the last American and France trucks that was built in Bluefield. The seals were at, they still actually have the original leather seals inside of the truck. So it's, it's an older pumper. The pumper will not reach capacity when it does a pump flow test, which could hurt us on our ISA rating because it's one of the things that ISA looks for is pumping capacity on your pumpers. With that pumper not being able to reach capacity, that could possibly cause us some ISA problems as well. Any questions or anything I can answer for you all?
How long would you expect these, like the new ladder truck and the new pumper truck to be in service?
A new ladder truck would hopefully last us 30 to 40 years.
30 to 40?
Yes, ma'am. And that 40 is stretching.
Right.
But, you know, this is a 1.4 million investment.
So the one we have now is how old though? I mean, that's...
Forty-four.
Yeah.
Maybe check on grants. Yes, sir, and the thing that hurts us on grants is we are a funded municipality department versus a royal funded department. So us trying to ask for like a FEMA grant or the assistance firefighter's grant, we can try, but the likelihood of getting that is slim.
Okay, well, who can we write checks to?
They're waiting on phone calls.
You know, I like saying, we've been talking about the ladder truck for, I know that I came here in twain, so it's been a few years and Jason's really picked up the ball and ran with it, but to keep that truck online is just a money hole. And we realize it, and you know, sometimes you've just got to keep putting Band-Aids on it. Trust me, it looks like every turn we take, I'm trying to juggle numbers and I tried to juggle them early. You know, after you look at numbers for so long, they just begin to come upside down. Sometimes you've just got to walk away and let it go through. And it does, but I'll pull up what y'all, what y'all have done down there. You know, he took a fire truck that, like you said, was, should have been decommissioned and put it back together. And we spent a chunk of change on it.
Thirty-two cents.
And unbudgeted, but you had to have...
To look at the trucks down there, you can't say that the problems they're having is from lack of care. Because you can look at those trucks and they still look brand new.
Yeah.
But it's just, and that's you guys and your crew just taking care of them. They look great, but when they're starting to fail inspection and things like that, I...
Yeah, I mean, you just can't, you know, we've struggled every budget work session with trying in this economy and the situation that we're in, but you know, that's historically been a method of operating is to push it down the line, kick your can down the line. And you know, you're holding together a 40-plus-year-old truck and one day you're going to get called on and I hate to say it, it's not if, it's when, if we don't react.
Yes.
And it's going to be unfortunate, so...
Is this the same size as the other one?
No, actually, this is a, it's a bigger truck. It's a, the current truck we have now is a 75-foot, this is 100-plus. It also has a 300-gallon water tank and a 20-gallon foam cap.
Well, I remember when the Van Dyke building burned, you could have used those 25 feet for sure.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Because it was on that big truck came from Bluefield.
Yes, sir.
So I tell you, going up in that new truck and watching them try to set up the old trucks and they set them up side by side, and within 30 seconds, I mean, you were up and you were ready to spray, spray water, whatever, while the guys were still trying to get the stanchions out and everything set level, it was just a panic.
The hydraulic system, when we done the demo truck, the hydraulic system in our truck, it's old, I mean, it's 44 years old. And like the mayor said, him and I were actually in the basket. I was up seeing it over the Fuller period building and our guys were still trying to get the averages down on the truck. Stuff like that, that's minutes that could potentially save lives.
Especially in our own buildings, like Richland is pointing to.
Yes, sir. And you know, I echo what the man is saying, I'll agree that it has to be proactive and reactive. We're peace and milk together right now. We're saying a prayer for January, just to try to get through where we can, you know, influence something and say, hey, you know, you've got this going, run the way of things.
So this is a tanker truck less...
No, sir, it's not a tanker truck, it's a pumper truck.
What about the tanker truck you're talking about?
We don't have a tanker. We have three Class 8,000 gallon pumpers. The quote will be for an additional 1,000 gallon pump, we're the French that we're replacing it with, just a 750 gallon pump. So we're actually going up in water capability for the replacement pump. And it's given us more fire flow capability for, hopefully down the line, we can call ISO and have them come in and re-rate us after we get everything put together. Hopefully we could drop a point or two in that, maybe lower some insurance premiums across town.
Yeah, it affects your ISO ratings in town insurance, affects the insurance of home loans. You know, I can remember years ago, I actually, I actually signed a check in Little Virginia when that truck was falling apart. And at the time, I had negotiated contracts with the county. And I can't, I hate to close, I think it was like $40,000 at all angles, that they were contributing in the contract, you know, the way, the way it was written was when called upon across the county. So I know for a fact that that truck in Bluefield has been detoured four or five times that I'm aware of in the last eight years, and it's responded all across the county. So those negotiations still need to take place, you know, those talks with the county still need to take place. And you know, you've got support, obviously, from Bluefield, Richland, everybody gives support when you're paying for it, so... But to have a return on investments, some offset in cost, but again, it cancels, just like every other project we've got, you know, we've got projects after projects and, you know, we try, we try to juggle necessities, but at the same time, offering better quality of life. And that's where you see the sports facility come into play. And then what about the water lines and the sewer lines and the sewer projects and on and on and on and on. So I know I will be working with that truck in mind, but if you had to have one of the two?
The towers, the tower would be top priority.
Yeah, and it's fully independent.
Yes.
So what I, I know it's not the right terminology, what's the word for that?
We could actually run that out and it could actually act as a pumper's weight. It's a liquid pack.
It's fully capable of running and calling its own.
Yes.
So it can carry it or it can, it can also, it can also remove more, more from two and a half or four eight standing. It can, and obviously it can give you the safety distance from above at all angles and across, so it's absolutely unnecessary. I think the county will, will see it that way too. It's a way on the thing, so, yeah, appreciate it. Probably will get both of them by the way, we'll be transparent at one point.
Right. The fast thing, I definitely need the tower with what it's supposed to.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
Have you checked on the bathrooms and stuff down there, do you need showers? Will they work?
No, I haven't, I haven't contacted Chris or Donnie about those yet. Those are long-range plant projects.
Have you checked code 19, code? I figured they might be with us.
We'll look into that.
Showering shower.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You got to build a firehouse for the truck. No, it'll actually, yeah, that's one of the first things I asked when I was down here.
We'll try, we'll try and help you.
It'll fit.
Can you bring it back?
Sir?
Can you bring it back?
Bring the demo back?
Yeah.
It's in North Carolina right now.
It don't mean you can't get it back one day though. I mean, it's... I like to see it back here just for always to...
Well, they have to alternate through their representatives, so when he gets back, we'll definitely look and take it back.
Okay, that way all the members should be there. I was trying to get there last time, but I just missed it.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to our unfinished business. Attorney Pyatt's going to talk to us about the charter spectrum franchise agreement.
You pretty much got cover on the highlights. It'll go with the public hearings to now, it just basically needs a vote from council if you're going to approve the franchise and to authorize the manager to sign off on the agreement and it'll take effect immediately. It's not like an ordinance, it's strictly its agreement, the way you have with charter. It will take effect upon his signature if you so direct.
So would that be two separate votes, one to approve and one to...
No, no, it's not an ordinance.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the franchise agreement and authorize the town manager to sign?
With 3K from municipal bill.
Yes.
I like that motion.
Listen, idiots.
So I make the motion on that.
I'll second.
All in favor of approval or to authorize the franchise agreement and to allow the manager to sign, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. Okay, franchise agreement approved. Next on the list is the...
Thank you.
Oh, yes, sir, thank you. Next on the list is the special exemption permit for 391 Dogwood Road. Mr. Hurley, I think we should discuss, but we need a motion to approve the special exemption permit.
Well, we are limiting him to four parking spaces, right?
No parking in the streets, no parking in the water tanks, keeps the neighborhood dry well.
And it's a one-year permit?
Yeah, and it's renewable after one year.
It won't come back before we got over there. It lets you request... Chris has the right to pull it. Before one year.
All right, so if there's complaints or whatever, then it can be...
Can I bring it back?
Yeah, at any time.
So you have to punch the hole.
So, okay, can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor of approving the special exemption permit for 391 Dogwood Road, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay. Okay, special exemption permit is approved. Next, an update on a request for a cul-de-sac on Dunford Drive, Manager Day.
You've got a letter in here from Chief Mill, Donnie Pruitt, Jason Hodges, and Chris Hurley, who are all appointed or recognized by the council as a committee to evaluate the cul-de-sac on Dunford Drive. However, since that time, Don Dunford contacted Donnie Pruitt and withdrew his request for the cul-de-sac. So it is no longer on the table, so we can move forward.
All right.
That was not where I thought this was going to go. So next is the casual recreation center conceptual site plan approval, Manager Day.
Okay, y'all will all recall the DDOT capital improvement project that Robyn and myself have been working on at Bulldog Lane off of Finn Castle, the two-turning lane. One of the criteria's for that project is economic development. And unfortunately, the C and X property, we took a stab at it and it was kicked out. Sports facility is just down the road, so we're hanging on that that's close enough. So VDOT is wanting the town council to recognize the drawings that were done, which you already have recognized, that TNL did several months ago, and vote to acknowledge that they are conceptual drawings and that we have future plans to move forward with those, with that structure, and we do.
Is it a type of sunup on it? If council vote will give them a minute, show that it's open. But if not, they got to withdraw the whole entire...
Yeah, they need to withdraw the whole application to do.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor of, so I missed out what we're making the motion on, whether to allow Todd to sign?
Yeah, all, all it's, all it's doing, they don't know, they have no idea that you know about the sports complex.
Okay.
They don't know. So all they're wanting to do is know that y'all are aware that we are planning to build a sports, an indoor sports facility on the old Rainy and Carl lot. They just, kind of like you got to get a council vote to get your free money. They just want to be sure you're aware of it.
Okay, so we have a motion, so all in, all in favor of allowing Todd to provide the minutes to BDOT so they can see that we're planning on building a sports complex, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say so by saying nay. All right, clear as night, wasn't it?
Was that from the house?
Yeah.
Right.
Going into the house?
Yeah, the turning lane, yeah, that's it. Yeah, that was a project we applied for with 100% funding about.
We like that, don't we?
Oh, yeah. If we get it, if we get it.
Thanks, Brad. I was thinking it, but not saying it. But next on the list, Manager Day, an update on BDH's funding offer.
I had the opportunity to speak to each of you with and without Rick Chitwood this week about the BDH project. You've got an offer in your packet to counter the offer that BDH originally submitted. And all I need is approval from town council to submit that request, the consideration to BDH. I also want to echo again that it does not commit you in any way. It's just a counter offer to them. They will reply back in due time and when they do, you will have the opportunity to forego it or move forward with it.
Okay, so...
I'll make the motion on that.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approval to submit the counter offer to BDH, please say so by saying aye. All opposed, please say so by saying nay. Okay, motion approved. The next new business, the approval of certificate for ordinance for issuance, sale, and award of taxable obligation water and sewer bond, wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Attorney Pyatt.
Before council night, you have two actual bonds proposed for the town to consider. The first is actually an ordinance for funding the entire wastewater treatment plant project of just $7,832,195. And then you actually have the second bond for consideration, which is, I remember being in the business, which is for the engineering fees and other assigned fees to get the bond off the ground in the amount of $458,287. So what the council will need to do tonight, this of course been worked through with the VRA and with Hunter Williams as bond counsel, will need to approve the first bond by vote. And what I recommend you do is probably have a waiver of the reading unless you want to read that.
It's perfectly clear.
You can read votes, have a great time reading both the ordinance and the resolution. But that needs to happen, you have to have a vote, a waiver of the reading, and you have to pass it as an emergency, so you have really three votes, I told you two, you like to have to have three. And you have to do the same thing with the resolution for the second bond, you have to have a waiver of the resolution for a reading of it, excuse me, and then a vote, and a vote for the passage of the resolution to pass and a vote.
I'm sure y'all got that then.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the first.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of waiving reading of the first ordinance, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say so by saying nay.
And I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance.
I'll second.
All right, I'll, any discussion? All in favor to approve the ordinance, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say so by saying nay. All right, and now we need a motion to vote it take effect immediately.
So move.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Here we do a roll call.
Okay, so a roll call vote. All in favor of this ordinance taking effect immediately, Councilman Fox? Councilman Brooks?
Uh.
Aye. Councilmember Mullins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
All right, so ordinance approved?
Just need to question direct to manager and court and the, we'll have to necessarily pay more to reflect the ayes and nays that was present and then certify those on the two bond counsel.
Do not wait, need to turn. I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Second. All in favor of waiving the resolution, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say so by saying nay.
The reading, not the resolution.
You said resolution.
I said reading.
Reading of the resolution.
It's all right, but after a while, not to get too...
It does, so I was reading when he was saying it, I seen resolution when he said reading, so... So we have a second? So all in favor of waiving reading, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, reading's waived. So next is, we need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
All in favor of ayes, approving the resolution, please say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say so by saying nay. All opposed, please say so by saying nay? The resolution approved, so I need one more. I need a motion to have the resolution take effect immediately. So may I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, we're going to do roll call vote again, all in favor of the resolution taking effect immediately, Councilmember Fox?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Mullins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Resolution hereby approved. So that was my mouthful. So next on the new business is the approved real estate tax write-off for 2003 and 2004. Treasurer Reagan, is that really?
In your packet, I put together kind of what this was about. The town began using Accufund software in 2005. When the programmers added the delinquent 2003 and 4 taxes, sorry, real estate taxes, to the software, they did not attach any property information to the balances. The only information that was put into the system was the customer's name and a balance due for past due prior years. There was no verifiable property information on the customer's account. We could not verify a map number or parcel ID. We could not verify an address or a legal description. We could not verify the value of the property. We had no usable verifiable information to say that customer owed for a property XYZ because the programmers did not put that information in there. In 2019, we switched to Southern software. In that software system, you must link the property and the balance together, and we were not able to do that because we did not have that information. The audited figures for 2003 and 4 total of $16,187. Real estate has a statute of limitations for 20 years, so we can go back 20 years and collect those. 2003 taxes will be wrote off in the year 2023, and 2004 taxes will be wrote off in 2024, regardless of what would happen here tonight. But I would like to ask that you all consider to let us remove that and have a vote that you would support us doing that, since we cannot verify that a person owes for that property.
So the 2003, 2004 was way back before anybody's time here, even Ron. So, but we're getting hit in every audit. It's mentioned in every audit, okay? So, you know, for everybody here, it's not a method of operating, it's not a method of how we manage, it's that the auditors put it in every audit that's been here since 2000, I guess, since they closed, I don't know. I know every one of them, I've been here, so. Yeah, it just makes sense to get it off the books, it's just simple work.
Well, you're back on Accufund, since they were the ones that has them. Right.
So I guess we just need a motion to approve the real estate tax write-off for 2003 and 2004?
I'm going to approve it.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I know, but you don't have, you can't get it, it's gone.
But David's arguing.
Yeah, you can get it. Well, if you can't link it to something.
If you can't link it to anything.
You hypnotize him? He's not in trouble.
They didn't work the whole camp.
You got yourself in trouble.
I think you got a motion and a.
We do have a second, so all in favor of approving the real estate tax write-off for 2003 and 2004, please say so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please say so by saying nay?
Nay.
Say that to you next time you're going on.
So motion approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Was it four, what was it? Was it six and a half?
Five to one.
Five to one. So next, the recommendation from the planning commission to set joint public hearing for December 8th at 7:15 PM for request to close the end of Kingston Street.
Just in motion to approve.
Yeah, that's all we.
Everybody familiar with what the project is?
Matt's in your bag there.
Yeah.
I know Terry's with it. You know what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, the owners currently are the. The district and the Holston Conference of United Methodist Church, and they're trying to sell the property. And they, for all this, full disclosure, they hired me to try to get it straightened out, not only in terms of the ownership of the property, the proper trustees names, but also to deal with the driveway problem because the listing agent, which is United, it's a task county realty, has the property and they've got some offers on the property that is contingent upon getting the driveway issue straightened out. Currently, the driveway occupies what is the northeast end of Kingston Street, which is a dedicated, never occupied or accepted by the town part of that street. They're wanting to basically acquire that, have it vacated so they can acquire it through a request of the town, of course, to put the tax assessed value, and be able to combine that with the existing property, so.
Yes, why, for your information, if that really relates specifically to this, but the property boundaries on the map are incorrect on the other side.
Which would say the other side.
Between that house and my house.
The east end.
They're, whenever you look at the Tass maps on the GIS, they're slightly skewed.
I understand that.
Yeah.
There's three trees that are sort of on the boundary that were always, always assumed to be a part of the parsonage property that are actually in my yard.
Yeah, and they're governed, that's all governed by the actual WF Arm and subdivision water lines, which were just basically determined back in 1957. So that's all.
Anything like.
I might even put that part up.
You need reports, Kenneth Dunford?
I've got the property boundaries, so the new owners will know where the boundaries.
I'm not in charge of that. I'm just the side traffic driveway, like that's the nature of the church, so.
There's been a bathroom kind of building sitting on it in our street for 30 years.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
They built a sizable retaining wall, at least, well, I want to hit them at the technical wall. It's not just a little berm.
Did the church build that?
I have no idea.
I wonder.
I have no.
Because that's what holds the street or driveway if this goes through.
That's the whole purpose of our house.
So we need a motion to set the joint public hearing for December 8th at 7:15.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of setting the joint public hearing for December 8th at 7:15, say so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, please say so by saying nay? Okay, the joint public hearing will be set. Item E, unveiling of site for Nancy Dunford, she'll be at Dunford Park schedule.
Okay, just want to let you know that that date will be November the 30th at 12:30. We will be working with the Chamber of Commerce and advertising, but please make a point to attend that if at all possible, again, November 30th at 12:30.
That's a Monday, right?
On the actual.
The next miscellaneous, nothing listed, so we're going to our miscellaneous.
Employee Christmas dinner.
Where's that? Oh.
It's the letter after each.
No, I have my glasses on. So, so next, I think, I think we try to get Todd to just carry on with this every year, but Employee Christmas Dinner Thursday, December 2nd, 6:30 to be out in the room. Manager Day.
We've had a number of discussions about the dinner due to COVID-19, and I've had a couple of different conversations with Sharon Thomas, and the mayor actually walked in one day when I was talking to her. Her guidelines for her establishment, she feels that she is well within her capacity to have that dinner and recognize hurdles to address COVID-19, in other words. And I guess eating establishments are just viewed differently. I don't know that. But I do feel like either way you go, and I know, you know, I don't care what we do, if we congregate together, there's going to be people commenting, but I basically just want to note council's perception of that. Again, Sharon Thomas feels 100% confident that she can meet all the guidelines that she's required to meet to address the COVID issue. Anybody have any questions or reasons? We could either take a verbal look at that.
What's her capacity in there? She's close to 160? And she's at 50% for this? How many people usually come to that center?
It varies different every year. We've had up to 150, sometimes 135.
Well, she couldn't handle all those people, I mean.
I don't know. She can handle that, she can handle 150.
So I guess her capacity must be 300.
Yeah. Oh, okay. That is her. Okay.
Depends on how many water lines we busted out that time.
Or for paying the payback.
So Brad, do we have anyone on the miscellaneous public comment?
Zach Wright?
Mr. Wright, if you could, if you could state your name and address and let me present it for three months, please.
Sure, yeah, when you're last and you have, you're not on the agenda and everybody's packing up, be very quick, so. Guys, my name's Zach Wright, I work for the Thrasher Group out of Beckley, West Virginia. We're, we're one of the town's engineering firms. Part of my new assignment with Thrasher is this southwestern Virginia region as the main point of contact, and that includes the town of Tasswell. I really just wanted to come and introduce myself to you all, attend the meeting, see what all was going on, and I've gotten to probably see more meetings in the next few months, and.
Is your contact info in here?
Uh, it certainly is, and I'll leave a couple of cards here for everybody if you want. Man, and Manager Day knows how to get ahold of me, too, so. But that's it, that's all I wanted to do, wanted to come say hi and let you know who I was, and if anything comes up, the reliable one. Ready to jump in?
We do appreciate it.
It's all God.
Thank you. Well, next on the agenda, council comments.
I'll make one. During this last election, if you look west of us in Cedar Bluff and Richlands, I think Cedar Bluff had a complete turnover in their council and mayor, and Richlands had a high turnover. And I just want to state how much I appreciate this council and our mayor and our staff here that do an amazing job of what we've done in this town in the last few years.
I concur totally.
Ditto.
Because we haven't had the infighting.
Right.
Especially the management head.
Seriously, got it for you.
Todd Dane Oll.
It's killing, look at it, it's killing.
So any additional council comments?
I'd like to make a comment with the police department, fire department, and rescue squad, they're doing a fine job. The town employees in the back, they're, they're really going at it. I'd really like to see them in the near future with a raise. Bring it up. Other than that, and Phil Handshoe, Deputy Handshoe, he passed away yesterday, and he was a hack, a deputy, I've worked with him in Richlands, I've worked with him with the Tassville Police Department here, and he is a man that will stand up to anybody, but he's also a gentleman. And I'd like to recommend him for the, with the Tassville Police Department, and it's his honor of his position that he had. But he was a good, he was a good deputy, he was a good police officer. We'll find a way to recognize him. We'll find a way to do something.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll do something.
I would like to thank everyone, I'm not sure who, but everyone who was responsible for allowing us to have a Veterans Day parade in the middle of COVID-19. It went well, I think it was well-attended, people were spread out all over town, but it seemed to go well.
I think it was a good one.
It was.
It was great. And they get double pass, well, not all.
Just don't let the chief be in charge of being in front, or it moves on.
That was the fastest parade I've ever seen.
You know why I did that, don't you? I asked Dr. Brandon Olson, I asked, "What kind of face do you want?", they said, "Come in my own area."
I saw the people in the, I see the verteles holding the cranes.
See, when I left, there was nobody sitting on those.
Wasn't nobody sitting on them when they started? Was he doing that?
I see her doing a snail crawl.
It's a good thing we didn't have the North Tasswell fire truck, or it never landed.
It won't hit one of them.
Would have kept up that fast.
Well, I think that they're talking about using the same route for the Christmas parade, so.
Be 10 mile an hour.
10 mile.
Any additional comments? Well, we have no executive session, so I'm happy to say. Or can I get a motion? You don't have to ask. We have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I like that motion.
I'll second it.
Let's go.
Any discussion? All in favor, say so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say so by saying nay? adjourn the meeting.